This is our work session on Monday, December 12th, 22, at 3:30. And before we start the meeting, I'm gonna ask Mr. Mullis if he would come up and lead us in a prayer.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the bountiful blessings of life. We know that every good and perfect gift comes from you. We thank you in this season we call Thanksgiving and transition into the season we call Christmas. We thank you for the greatest gift of all, our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. We ask your blessings upon those that are in authority over us. We pray that you would bless the Ware County Commissioners, give them wisdom and knowledge, understanding and discretion as they conduct all the business matters that are before them. Help them to do that, that's right in your sight. We pray that you would help all of us to conduct ourselves in a way that would be pleasing to you and acceptable to you. Bless all the sick and afflicted and those who have lost loved ones. Bless our nation, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Praise you. Praise you Lincoln to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our all.
Thank y'all. Okay, we have guest speakers on the item for this afternoon. And our first speaker is Mr. Judy Lingenthal. Would you come up please and...
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us the time to take to come and talk some things, talk about some things that are very important to the Bickley community. I'm Judy Lingenthal, 5701 Bickley Highway. Joining behind me are some of the Bickley residents. Evelyn Denton, who's a Bickley resident, and she's here to represent the Denton family who owns the land around the fire station. Kathy Mickson represents the many area people that are very interested in this project. And Brittany Waters-Tooten is the owner of Branch Farm Company, and she represents the many young adults we have in Bickley. And we have some other residents of Bickley here. But we are here today to ask for some community recreation services. You would ask, why in Bickley? Reason number one, if you look in your booklets there on page two, you see a map of Ware County with a circle drawn equally around the Trembling Earth Recreation Center. And you can see from that map that Bickley is the farthest community away from any present recreation services. If you notice, we're even farther than Axon and Argyle and Patterson. Trembling Earth is a wonderful facility, and many people in our community use it and enjoy it, or have in the past. But it's a long way from Bickley. I'm going to share with you a survey in a few minutes, and there are two households in that survey that show they live 28 miles from the recreation center, one way. I looked at Ware County's Recreation and Parks Mission Service, and their third goal that they list as their main goal is being geographically accessible. This project alone in Bickley would fulfill that goal because people would be coming in from Millwood and Wearsboro and Dixie Union. Why in Bickley? Reason number two, I'm the Bickley Elections Manager, and I see that every election for the last several years, Bickley has had more and more voters. We're quite proud and patriotic, but we're also growing. We gained 40 new registered voters this year. Now, 40 adults is a big increase for Bickley, a farming community. No apartments, no subdivisions, but Bickley community is growing in number, which brings number three, why in Bickley? Because Bickley is a caring, family-oriented community full of upstanding citizens. Example of that is Bickley had 78% voter turnout in the last election. Yes, I said 78%. And example number two, Bickley was the only rural precinct in this election that voted to pass the new SPOS tax. I'm proud to be from Bickley, but these two facts show you that Bickley might be far away from where we're standing today. But we have citizens there that don't just live in Ware County, they support Ware County. About 20 years ago, the Bickley community worked together with Ware County to build a volunteer fire station and some recreational facilities. Several of the residents seated behind me today worked on those projects. They helped build the station, they laid out the concrete, they poured concrete and many other things. Through that effort, our community has been enjoying this area for about 20 years. A tennis court, a basketball court, and a batting cage. Some very appreciated repairs have been made through the years, and now the children and grandchildren of those of us who built it are playing there. It's clean and it's safe. However, it's in need of some repairs. Some large trees that you can see in the pictures there, large trees have grown up over these tennis courts, and they form a big mess. So we formed a group to come ask for your help, and we got so excited, we decided to make a list out of it. I read in the SPOS proposal that Ware County is going to receive some SPOS funds. And as I read on my election ballot, lines 5 and 6 says it includes parks and recreation, facilities, improvements, and equipment. I've also been told that there may be some government money or grants that you could help us get that might be earmarked for rural areas for parks and recreation. Well, Bickley helped pass the SPOS. Bickley has shown we're good voting citizens, and I think your records will show that Bickley has a whole lot of hard-working, tax-paying citizens. So we are asking for your help now in providing us with a place for evening and weekend healthy entertainment. With the distance you see on that map, we don't have the option of dropping by the rec department or a city park with our children, and many of us are retired. But we seniors want to continue to play and enjoy fellowship and sunshine. If you will look over at page three in the booklet I handed you, we put out a volunteer survey on a Facebook group called Bickley Corner. And within two weeks, we got these. Fifty-three households responded. This 53 households represented the opinions of 164 people from age zero to 90, that every one of them pledged their participation. If you notice on the results there, you see that the walking track was wanted by 100% of the families there. We've talked about a walking track for years because we don't have any paved neighborhood streets to walk on. We have Bickley Highway, Lucy Moore Road, and Old Nichols Highway. Those are three major highways with hills and sharp curves and big trucks. It's not safe for walkers. The residents also showed a strong interest in learning pickleball. They're interested in a playground as well as tennis and the other things that are there. If you take a minute and look through the next five pages, four through eight, you will see some of the present conditions and problems at the tennis court and the area. If you go forward to page nine, you'll see our proposal of repairs and additions to the Bickley recreation area. I think you've all had that for a few days. Do I need to read down it? I'm not sure.
That... I believe everybody's pretty well familiar with this duty.
Okay. Page 10 and 11 toward the back have some pictures of some courts in the area that I was able to go and visit and take pictures of. Monroe Park has here in Waycross, I think the city resurfaced their courts and made them dual pickleball, tennis courts. And I'd also been hearing for months about Slaughterville, what they had done. So I made a trip to Slaughterville and took pictures. They have also done dual tennis, pickleball. I talked to the recreation director there, and he said they were about to do some more courts, that they had so much interest in pickleball, they were going to form an adult pickleball league in the new year. Now, if you don't know what pickleball is, we're probably gonna be learning pretty soon because it's a hot new sport coming that's kinda like outdoor ping pong. I saw on Fox News this week that the children in New York City were complaining. The adults are taking all their playgrounds to play pickleball on. So pickleball's going to be big for young and old. On page 12 are some cost estimations that our group came up with. We're not experts, but every price on there was researched with phone calls and internet and real people. So hopefully, some of this work on there that we put a price can be done with county crew or with some better negotiated bids. But I turn it over to you now if you have any questions or anything. You tell us how you can help us and tell us how we can help you get this done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. And I would like to, you know, I think we could do some things on that. But Steve is y'all's commissioner in that area, and I think we're gonna have to go through him, you know, to ask him to start it and to let him... And he could probably explain to you what we could do for you.
Thank you, Chair.
We kinda started that conversation in a football game.
Yeah.
Judy, I got one question on the land that I think Lloyd and his wife, panel, donated around the backside of tennis court. It's something we could probably talk with him about later on about, you know, getting easement, where we can get the trees took down right there. I mean...
We're not exactly sure how the landline runs, but we just said like 30 feet. I kinda think it's a triangle.
It is.
And probably a tenth of an acre. But we just said a fourth of an acre, I think, would cover it. They had to be at a ballgame today, so they couldn't come. But they are very much on board to either easement or donating if they have to.
Would they donate this property to Denton? You think that would, that 25 foot around it?
That's what I'm talking about, that strip.
They said they would donate it?
Yes.
They will? Okay.
Correct, Evelyn.
Evelyn's a daughter-in-law, so...
Okay. Evelyn, they would donate it, so it would be alright?
That's it.
That's what I said.
Okay. Would they survey it or would we need to survey it or would they donate?
Probably the county would need to. Do counties have their own surveyor now?
We, uh...
No, we have to hire all of them.
We'd have to hire it done.
Okay. I put an estimate in there for surveying on the back page, but you know, that was kinda...
We, uh...
You might find a local survey.
I had a business person tell me that would cover it, so...
We might find a local survey and do it for, you know, donation. Judy, let us look this over and see what we can come up with and try to come up with a price tag on it. I know you got $59,000, but I'm sure we could probably get it done cheaper than that. But we appreciate y'all coming and presenting to the commission. We're gonna help y'all.
Yeah.
That's good news. It's the first time I've ever been in this room, but it was a pleasure being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Evelyn, would you, I could probably ask Charles if he would survey it for us. We could probably handle that surveying, I think, pretty good. And if they'll donate it, donate it, then we can move forward on it. But I think we can get some help on it. Okay? Anything else on it?
Can Scott instruct the Recreation Department and Public Works to... It's been two or three years since Commissioner Barnum and I have been up there and just cleaned up, cutting limbs and that kinda stuff. I mean, I was on the board when the Bickley Fire Department was built and this little recreation department was built. And I think it's well needed, but I'm looking at it as two different things. Maintenance, Recreation Director's back here. They should maintain it on a regular basis. But, and then look at the playground equipment and all these other activities areas. But they should, as far as I'm concerned, they should start immediately to start cleaning up.
Yeah, okay. I noticed there's a lot of problems already, you know, on some lights and different things like that that need to work.
Yeah, the fire chief is here, and he can see about the lights. I mean, that's his job.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to... Appreciate Ms. Lincoln Feller coming up and bringing this to the commission's attention. I rolled out with Steve shortly after I come on the commission. We were looking at the volunteer fire station and all, and you know, like I said, the tennis courts and all that stuff, it does need some attention. And I just want to say I appreciate the Bickley community for the support of the SPOS tax. And also I realize that recreation is important to any community, and you all are away from the main, you know, facility that we have in the county. And as Commissioner Pope alluded to, the Recreation Department, I didn't even know, it was under our purview, whether that was under Recreation for the county or whether that was a private facility or not. So that was my first thing I wanted to establish was that. And once it was established that it is the county, then we need to take care of it, you know? And I hope that they can get with the rec director because, you know, it's off the beaten path now.
Yep.
If you say you're going to Bickley, you're going to Bickley. You're not getting mistaken in going to Bickley, but you're intending to go there.
Right.
So I think we need to think about that and also work with the rec director because this will be something that's added to their work schedule and workload, which may necessitate maybe, you know, having to spend a little bit more time or additional personnel if, you know, to keep up this kinda stuff. I don't know, but I think it's needed out there. And I appreciate y'all bringing to attention. And I like when citizens come and they've come with a problem, but they also bring a solution to the problem also. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. All I would suggest is that we act on it. Start by getting us a survey and get a piece of land where we can have the rights to it, you know? And then we can get it cleared. Then we can, that's a start, and that's probably gonna be the first thing that needs to be done. So if we can move on that, then we can make it move. And then we'll let y'all know what we can do with it. Okay?
I'd just like to thank the Bickley community. Y'all is the only precinct that passed a SPOS in the county.
In the county. That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to recognize one of my former coworkers, Bobby Denton. Known him for a long time and just glad to see him and his brother Lloyd Denton. We all worked together at Railroad, so appreciate you being here, Bobby.
Yeah. We appreciate y'all coming. Kathy, Evelyn, all of y'all. Denton. Okay. All right. We'll move on then. Okay. Next is Ms. Martha Powers-Jones, Okie-Fenokee Regional Library.
Good afternoon. I'm Martha Powers-Jones with the Okie-Fenokee Regional Library System, and this is Sherri Speltaner. She's our branch manager here in Waycross. As you know, the Okie-Fenokee Regional Library System is headquartered here in Waycross. We have five branches, one in Athlin, Bacon, Clinch, Pierce, and of course, the Clear Counties. So we're excited to be here. And I'd like to thank you for your support and for recognizing that a public library that thrives is essential for our local community. So I appreciate that. As you can see from our flyer, our library usage is robust. Our summer reading numbers this year were the highest they've ever been. So we're very proud of that. And I know I've said this a few times, so if you've heard it before, just hear it again. We were the Georgia Public Library System of the Year for 2019. So that's really awesome, right? Maybe? Maybe?
Yeah.
Come on, people. We were the third in that series of awards to be recognized. The other libraries recognized were Athens Regional and DeKalb County. So we're very proud of being recognized for that. I know that the issue before you are trustee appointees later in this meeting. For reappointment, we have recommended Tawana Harris. She's our board chair, our regional vice chair and treasurer. She's the chaplain at the prison here and pastor for the Austin Chapels to the meet church in Waycross. So we feel she brings a lot to the position. And as Commissioner Lucas has stated, she does a great job as chair, very balanced, very reasonable. Cassie Clemens is unable to continue because she was just promoted to assistant dean at Coastal Pine. So we're super excited for her. But unfortunately, that does mean in her new position, she doesn't have the time to dedicate to the library board, so... Trustees have suggested Janice Williams of South Georgia College as her replacement. This would continue our practice of having higher education represented on our board. Also, with roughly 40% of Ware County being minority, our current board is only 20% minority. And that would include Tawana Harris, and I think that's important to note. This obviously is something we're working on. Reappointing Harris and appointing Williams would take us to 30% minority. So we're still not really need to be representation-wise, but it would be notable progress. That being said, we know you have many priorities to consider when making the board appointments. I just wanted to give you the reasoning behind what trustees were thinking with recommending Tawana Harris and Janice Williams. You've probably heard a little bit of our recent kerfuffle with the pride flag display. We always like making the news, although we do like to do so for positive reasons. We do have a process in place for anybody who has concerns about the library. Issues must first come before administration. If we can't find accommodation within policy, then it would be referred to the local board for consideration. The whole reason for that is we wanna make sure the local board is the final, has some say in the matter before it goes to the regional board. The local board would hear the complaint, and then they would make decisions on if they disagree or agree with how that policy is being implemented. If they feel that a policy needs changed, then the issue would go before the regional board. So we do have a process in place that usually works fairly effectively, even if it takes place on a bureaucratic time scale. We only meet quarterly, so obviously if somebody has an issue in October, we're not gonna be able to really address it until January, depending on how things go. For the pride flags, we did hear the issue at the July board meeting and at the October board meeting. Pride flags were removed. The Ware Board set a local policy that the Georgia and US flags would be the only year-round flags on display. All other flags would be limited to seasonal displays. So that was the response to the current concerns. Many who attended the October Ware meeting were not aware of the process to address the board. So Chair, our regional chair, Kim Spivey, allowed a one-time exception to the process, and the regional board heard the complaints at the November meeting. After the November meeting, she directed me to draft policy language to guide and create perimeters for staff-created displays. This would be reviewed, revised, considered by the regional board of trustees in February. So you can see how our process is playing out. Our process is designed to ensure that everyone has equal opportunity to share their concerns. The trustees and I welcome community involvement because this is how we thrive. We're a public library, and that means we serve everybody in the community as equitably as possible. I, as well as the trustees, are committed to remaining responsive to these concerns. I will say that in my time as director, which I started in January of 2018, I've heard at least 13 complaints. And of those 13 complaints, 12 of them, we were able to resolve before they got to the board. This other, this last complaint with the pride flags didn't violate policy, so it did have to go before the board if they wanted to consider a change to policy. Our displays are designed to be educational, informational, and to be, provide welcoming atmospheres for the library to everybody in the community. We did have some people speak who seemed to misunderstand the intent of our displays and actually said we hadn't had nativity displays or hunting displays, I believe was mentioned. We actually have had those displays. The catch is, of course, we have the hunting display, but we also had a display that talked about begging cookbooks. With the nativity, we would also have displays about Hanukkah. So we do try to represent everybody, but obviously in this case, we need to do more to reach out to the conservative Christian community, and that's something we're working on. We've also updated our board page so they have more information about how to address the board, should they have concerns, as well as what's going on with upcoming meetings. So obviously, we have some room to grow, and we're excited to do that. We're probably one of the few agencies that really loves public comment because that's how we grow, right? Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions, concerns, reviews? Come on, Mr. Burris. I know you're just dying to give me a compliment.
Yeah. First of all, appreciate you coming, you know, and explaining to us, you know, about the library and when I go back a few years back, when we were trying to pass the Splotch Tax, I remember when Susan, I can't remember what her last name was. She was the Library Director at that time.
Oh, that was a big one of mine times, but I do remember a Susan.
That was from, we built that new library just there now.
Yes, and it's a beautiful library. I understand Commissioner Pope was on the library board at the time, so thank you.
But the only question I have, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. Okay, your board meets quarterly?
So we have five local boards, one for each county. They meet quarterly. The Regional Board is the legal and financial signer for everything. So if you were upset, for instance, you would sue the Regional Board, if that makes sense. So the Regional Board implements policy, oversees policy, and approves the final budget for the system.
Okay, so your board, the local board here, they meet what, quarterly?
They meet quarterly. Their last meeting was October. Their next meeting is January twenty-third. The Regional Board, the one that is responsible for policy, meets the first Monday in February, which I think is February sixth.
Okay, so the, for the board representation, I think I heard you indicated it's forty percent minority population, but then it's only twenty percent representation on the board?
Right, and that's only if you reappoint Tawana Harris. It would be thirty percent if you also appoint Janice Williams, but we understand you might have different priorities to consider. And that would be for the local board. The Chair of the local board, as well as two appointees from the local board, serve on the regional board from each local district. Currently, that is Tawana Harris's Chair and then Andy Wall, who's the Board of Commissioners representative, and Candace Bryce, who is the Board of Education representative for the Ware County Board.
You say y'all are making a concerted effort to try to be more inclusive, okay?
We really, it's an area that we definitely need to work on, so I'll start with the board.
I think that's all I have right now.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Okay. Anybody else on it?
I don't.
Alright, the one thing I did, oh, sorry. What can I do for you?
I was gonna ask Tim if he had anything.
Well, I'm still reading through the notes on this. The one question I have, we've talked about it before, but we talked about the inclusiveness of everybody.
Right.
And we also talked about Pandora's Box. Once it's opened, you can never get it closed.
Yes.
And that's the reason that I brought that up at our meeting when we were in executive session at the time, because...
Well, if we discuss it in executive session...
It stays there, yeah.
Yes. Now, I will say the last time we went to executive session, we shouldn't have gone to executive session and we came out of it fairly quickly, so whatever you discussed after that is fair game.
And I've been reading through y'all, the thing you emailed me and gave me all the information on all y'all's bylaws and everything. And if I've understood it correctly, I've read in there that all employees of the library are to remain in position of neutrality, neutral on every topic.
During, while they're being paid. I can't control what they do outside of library hours.
Right, while they're being paid. And that's my, that's one of my main concerns is, you know, I understand some parents take advantage of situations sometimes and they drop the kids off for whatever reasons and they leave them there for hours at the time.
We're happy to be that place. We'd rather they drop the kids off here than say Flash Foods. Well, not here, here, but at the library here.
I'm just, you know, I expressed my concern at the meeting and I've also expressed it with my county manager and my commissioners here of what I dealt with at the school board, been about twelve years ago. And that was, that was a bad situation.
You're speaking to the satanic group that, yes.
And that was all...
So the issue there was the satanic group wanted the same treatment as a church group.
Right.
And I totally appreciate that. Like I said earlier though, we do displays on anything people bring before us, as well as make sure that with our displays, we provide a variety of subjects and subject matter. So like I said, we would do a Hanukkah display and a Christmas display. We would do nativity as well as Kwanzaa. We would do Ramadan when we do Pentecost. So our, our big thing is we have a representative view of everything that might be happening in the community, as well as information. Like a lot of people didn't understand what Day of the Dead was. We did a Day of the Dead display, which is actually a Christian holiday, as well as a Mexican holiday. So our, we try as hard as possible to be as diverse as possible. That being said, obviously there are many in our community that are not aware of that diversity and feel that they're being excluded. So we need to do a better job of advertising everything that we offer. That's absolutely a fair point. That yes, just because a 4H brings in a display doesn't mean the Sons of Confederacy can't also bring in a display. That's what the public library world's about. We try to provide a wealth of viewpoints. Now, I will say that despite all that in our approach to displays, the Regional Board is still considering defining perimeters for staff-created displays and that might limit what we do in the future. And that's how it's supposed to work. I would love to consider myself the king of my little fiefdom, but I am not. It's very sad. But the whole point is we have trustees who are appointed by our funding agents who represent the community we serve. And at the end of the day, the issues come before them and they consider how things are going to be implemented. And then I implement them to the best ability that I can representing the Board's viewpoint. So that's just how we work. Democracy at its finest.
Again, I'll go back to, like I said, I read in the bylaws that employees are to remain completely neutral. You know, unbiased and neutral, be educated.
During library hours. I can't control what they do outside of that.
During library hours. But you also made comment of a couple of your employees made the gay pride tree.
No, that was actually not an employee-created display. That was created by our teen group at the time and it was only created in 2020 and it was not a pride tree. It was a tree that had many different elements, including music, little QR codes to their favorite songs, as well as coupons and quotes that they really liked and rainbow ribbons was a part of that tree. But that was created by our library teens and the only year they opted to do a Christmas tree was 2020. They haven't opted to do that since. Because you probably realize this, teens grow up and they age out and we had a much different group of teens in 2021 and 2022 and sadly, they were not interested in Christmas. So our current teens do much different things.
I got three teens myself, so I know how that is.
Yeah. And it's very important, if you guys work with teens, to make sure they feel ownership of whatever you're asking them to participate in.
Take pride, take pride in what they do, absolutely.
Right, and so when they wanted to do a Christmas tree, it was a giving tree where anybody could take anything off the tree if they wanted and we left it up to them. The only thing that I weighed in on, or Sherri as branch manager weighed in on, if there was music that included profanity or anything to that effect. We did not weigh in on the rainbow ribbons.
I agree, I agree.
And I understand the rainbow ribbons bore of concern to some, but at heart, they were not nefarious in any way. So we did not weigh in on.
Our position as a governing body, I mean, according to state and federal law, we are to remain one hundred percent neutral, straight across the board, in all areas. And that's the reason, like you're in here now, in our chambers, we've got two flags on display. That's the only flags that will ever be on display in here, because we have to remain in that position of neutrality. We have to remain totally neutral straight across the board. And we can't get ourselves in a position of saying, of giving our blessing, I guess you could say, or giving our consent.
So I'm hearing you say you would advocate for no displays.
To be level and straight across the board, that's, yes.
Well, that is definitely something you should bring up to the next Waycross Board meeting and that would be policy language they would need to consider.
Could I interject something right here?
Absolutely, Mr. Barnard.
Lady Attorney, could you state to the crowd what our obligations are as far as county commissioners?
Right.
I mean, we don't want this thing to carry on and on and on. We've got, the county's got two objectives in this.
Certainly, and we have been going about almost forty minutes now and I know we've only been through two speakers and I think we've got an additional five on the agenda, so hopefully we can, you know, speed it along as we go. But certainly, you know, this government body, county commissioners, as far as their role with the library, are responsible for funding. We obviously, you know, have funding. We are a funding source for the library. And then second is our appointments. We have three appointments to the board and then also have an ex officio member of the board, who I think is a voting member but doesn't serve as part of the quorum. So, you know, our ability, whether we want to or not, you know, is limited because we, you know, we're not responsible for coming up with policies or bylaws or anything else. We're limited to funding and appointments. So it's a good reminder, I think, for, you know, anyone who is planning to speak today, certainly we can, you know, hear concerns and things of that sort, but understanding what the role of this board is for our library.
I don't think we're, I mean, I don't think we have nothing to do with the library. Y'all need to take that to, have that on your own. Don't bring it up here. We're gonna appoint somebody and y'all have to run that thing yourself. If you can't, you need to get somebody else, the way I look at it.
Well, we would rely on your appointments.
Point blank. I don't, I don't play that stuff. I don't know nothing about some of that stuff y'all talking about. These are all these different agendas and all that. I don't have anything to do with that. Don't know nothing about it. So I'm gonna ask you, if you would, to sit down and let's go to the next one and then we'll find out a little bit about what he thinks about it. We'll move on then. If we have to, we'll come back to you, okay?
Oh, absolutely. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Josh Lee.
Commissioner Burris, you were thinking of Susan Roberts.
Right.
That was thirty-five years ago.
You can tell you how long it is.
Thirty-five years ago.
How old were you then?
Half a day, damn. Go ahead, Josh.
Hey, how are y'all? Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate what you just said. That brings up what I am concerned about. But I do think you have a little bit more responsibility than just sending anybody. There's a reason why the library board is made up of three county appointees. It's because you are supposed to make sure that we, the county, is represented. So I was a little concerned about the dismissal a little bit. So I do hope that you understand our heart and our care about this and that you will take very careful care. The board members are very important. As Ms. Martha talked about, the board members that make it to the regional board, they make, they approve every policy. They approve the constitution. They approve the bylaws. So one of your responsibilities, as we've just been told, is to appoint a board member. That is everything. That's why we're here. Because we're not getting it done at the library level, so we need to come here because you are our representation. You are giving us our representation. The board members not only approve the constitution and the bylaws and the personnel manual, which I've given to you. I hope you take a chance to look at the tabs that I gave you, especially the very last tab, the biggest tab. There is two pages in our Ware County, in the regional library personnel policy manual. Two pages dedicated to special rights for transgender employees. That is shocking to me. And in this special rights, they're going to say it's just that they're trying to ensure that trans女生 get the same rights as us, but that is not the case. In the personnel manual that the library has right now, which the board members, that's why I'm talking to you, the board members that you're about to approve are super important. Those board members approve this. In that personnel manual, right now, it is considered harassment. Not only harassment, but sexual harassment in that manual. If you call a biological male "he" whenever he would prefer to be called a "she" or a "z" or a "they", that is in our policy, that is in the policy that is approved by the board right now. Sexual harassment for calling them a pronoun that has been used for two hundred years. And I looked it up on Google. The definition is still on Google. They'll change it. They'll destroy words. They'll do an Orwellian destruction of words soon, but it's still on Google. If you look up the definition of "he" or you look up the definition of "she", it still means what I thought it meant, what my teacher, one of the chair members of the library board was my teacher in English. And if I wrote "they" as a singular pronoun, I would have failed. And "he" still means a pronoun referring to a man or a male. "She" still means a pronoun referring to a woman or a female. So why in our policy has the boards for the library, that three members, so actually four members, have been approved from this county, why are they approving two pages dedicated to special rights for trans女生? Also, it says, quote, "that transgender employees have the right to use the bathroom that corresponds to their sexual identity, not their sex assigned at birth." Now, that is not a right that should be granted. That's a special right, you see, because also in that manual, a nine-year-old can go to the library, as Martha talked about, which I would rather them go to the library, they'd eat, they'd flesh fruits or something. But a nine-year-old can be left at the library without an adult, without a guardian at all. An eight-year-old and younger only has to have a thirteen-year-old with them. But a nine-year-old, let's take a nine-year-old girl at the library by herself. She can go into the bathroom and a biological male with male anatomy, a stranger, an adult male, can go in that bathroom with that nine-year-old girl. You're asking for trouble. You own, if I understand correctly, and this is a question I have for you, I haven't gotten a clear answer, but I think I know, you own the county building. And if a man, and I'm not saying, they're gonna say, I'm saying, calling them all perverts. No, we know, all throughout the country, we've heard of the stories of people taking advantage of these crazy policies where men can go into women's bathrooms and perverts will go in there and take advantage of people. Just the fact that a man with male anatomy can go into the bathroom with a girl that is nine years old, that is actual sexual harassment and sex, that's sexual abuse to that little child. That is unacceptable. So it's very important to me that you make a very good decision. And she mentioned about the displays. There's an agenda at the library. Flags, I gave you a definition of each of the flags. They all are about sexual preferences. Who they would prefer, excuse me, but who they would prefer to have sex with. That's what every one of these things talk about. Bisexual, if you ask Siri, I thought about doing it. If you say Siri, what does bisexual means? It says sexually attracted to a man or a woman. If you ask Siri, what is pansexual, pride flag? If you ask Siri what pansexual means, Siri will tell you it's sexual attraction regardless of gender, as if there's more than one. It's all about their sexual identity. There's a book club for minors only, thirteen to seventeen-year-olds, about their pride. There is a minors-only book club about who they would prefer to have sex with. At our library right now. And it doesn't require parental approval. Some people would say, well, if the parents allow, I'd let them do it. Now, this one, they can do that without parental approval. Now, there's a fourteen and up club about anime. They have to get parental approval for that. But the thirteen to seventeen-year-old pride club, only for minors, about where they meet once a week and they call it the Reading Rainbow. They get together and read a book about a young adult LGBTQIA+. That's what it says in the, in the club description, book. It's a, it's a young adult LGBT book that they read every month and talk about in this minor club. There's a crazy agenda happening at this library and a focus on sexuality. Those flags are all about sex. The mural has a rainbow symbol on it, which is very, I'm not, it's about, they say it's about inclusivity and these people feeling that they're not welcome. Everyone is welcome to use the library's resources. It is not about being welcome. It's not about being inclusive. As a matter of fact, a flag is exclusive. Like you were saying, the only flags that actually are inclusive of all people in Ware County are the American flag and the Georgia flag. These other flags are literally exclusive. It's only for, the lesbian flag is for women who are sexually attracted to women. That's it. It excludes everyone else. There's no place for that at the library. There's so much more, but my points that I'll have for you, there's three things. I think you mentioned two things that are a part of it. I think there's a third one because of the building. I want you to do everything in your power to be careful about who you appoint. I, I want you to do everything in your power to be careful about who you appoint to this board. There's an agenda, okay, I, I need to mention one more thing about, um, the, the flags. We addressed the flags to the director in the policy that she, she brought up. We went to the director, me and my sister, we sat down with her, told her our concerns, and she told me that the display policy does not prevent the flags, so she cannot prevent those flags from being put up until you go to the region. The region, the regional board, she pushed it off on the regional board. Then you read that, um, policy manual I have in front of you. And the display policy says the director has the, the, the privilege of choosing what things are inappropriate or not. Flags about who you prefer to have sex with are inappropriate if anything is at the library. So, our director has the ability to say, no, flags about sex cannot be displayed at the library. She didn't do it. That's concerning to me. So, be very careful about appointing. I know that's the normal process, but there's something wrong at the library. So, I encourage you to be very careful about appointing members that have been recommended here. And appoint people who will know that there's a problem and will address the problem. Also, the taxpayer funds. You don't have, I, if I understand correctly, and this is a question to you, but I don't believe you have to give any, any funds to the library. It's a good thing if we had a good, good policy going at the library, but without addressing this crazy policy, you don't have to give them any funds. You might lose one board member, but you would still have three board members, and you don't have to give them any money. You don't have to give them any of mine and the other citizens' county taxpayer money. Also, the county building. You own the building. I feel like, uh, this is a question, but I feel like you have the privilege to say, no, you can't have these displays. It's our building. No, you can't have these policies. It's our building. I, I'm not sure about that. But those are my three concerns. I thank you for listening to me, and if you have any questions, I'm willing to take them. I know we are over a lot of time, but thank you for listening to me.
I do have one question, and I, I would like Martha to step back up, 'cause I wanna ask both y'all at the same time, if that's all right, Mr. County Manager?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Chairman. Uh, what you just said, Mr. Leach, did I say your name right, Mr. Leach?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what you just said was, if, if a man comes in today identifying himself as a woman, that he can go into the grocery restaurant with a nine-year-old in there?
Can, can I add to that? I've, I've left off something. The policy says that they will not, um, tell, tell a transgender or somebody that identifies in a certain gender that they can't use a bathroom. It does allow, if you feel uncomfortable, you can use a single-stall bathroom. And then the, the policy says, when available. They don't even say that you will be able to use a single-stall bathroom. It says, if, if there's an, if it's available, when available, if you feel uncomfortable, you can use a single-stall bathroom. So, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, but I forgot that point. That was really important to me.
Uh, am I understanding what you said correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that correct, Martha?
I am so glad to have the opportunity to address this. Um, we follow the Georgia Public Library Service suggestive language for our policies, and that is their suggestive language for transgender employees. Um, I spoke with Candace Grace, uh, one of our trustees, about that language, um, and how we would go about changing it, as well as saying we probably need to get a lawyer, a lawyer of this personnel law to weigh in. But at this point, federal laws protects transgender employees as a recognized status. And so, that, that's, that's part of the issue. We're not sure how that translates to public use of public facility bathroom. Um, so we are trying to work through that language, um, to kind of see. Um, as you probably know, and I'm sure Scott and my wife can attest, the, the law's changed a lot on transgender employees in the last five years, and we're just trying to keep up. Um, but yes, at, at the current time, based on Georgia Public Library Service suggestive language, that is what we do. And I would also like to point out a few inaccuracies that come out of mine. One is that we do require permission for thirteen, seventeen to participate in LGBTQ, um, book club. Two is that we follow DFAC's recommended language on unattended minors. Um, we do that for legal reasons, obviously.
Well, is my inconsistency with that part, the last part?
Oh, you just, you were citing it as a concern, and I agree, it's a concern.
Okay, I thought you were correcting me, but you were saying it's true.
No, we, we are following, we always try to follow legal precedent whenever we can. Or not a system that can afford a lawyer on retainer, and only bring in a lawyer for special issues. So, we do try to always point to state agencies whenever we have language that affects anybody. Um, and the other inconsistency, and this, this isn't your fault, this is my fault for not making it clear, but he was citing the public display policy. So, if a local organization wants to post something in the library, that policy governs that. Not, we, we do not have a policy that governs staff-created displays. That is indeed something that we are working on based on current concerns. So, um, just, just, just to clarify on that. I would, I would love to be able to weigh in, but I'm tied by what our board had recommended, and our board will definitely consider public, or sorry, staff-created displays policy at the board meeting, so just to F Y I. And then that's not your fault, that's just me not making it clear.
Well, just to, if I can ask you a question. So, what you're saying is the board would not allow the director to make decisions about the staff policies, not the staff displays?
That would fall under normal, um, business, and nothing, I, since we are a place of inclusion and diversity, not none of the current displays violate the policy. That being said, if we create a display policy that governs staff-created displays, that sets parameters, that, that would be where I could weigh in.
I apologize, y'all, we gonna have to move on now. We, we ain't gonna start here and figure out agendas and all that stuff today.
I ain't here for that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just quick, Mr. Leach, what, what is your position? You a?
He just citizen.
Just citizen.
Yes, I would, I would be using this library, and my taxpayer dollars are going to promote an agenda. That's my concern.
Okay, and as far as the board members, whenever you, we send board members to you, I don't know, do we just lay like, if I was commissioned, well, I think somebody would be a good board member, I think it would be incumbent upon us to at least let that potential board member talk with the library, somebody at the library, and let them fill them out, because they know pretty much more what they're looking for than we do.
We send, uh, three, how many is it? We send three?
We send four.
Four, we send four members over there?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that right, Ms. Martha?
That's what we do, send four members.
One ex officio, which would be you, and then three members of the.
One ex officio and three members. Okay. Now, we get to choose those members, right?
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Well, I think that, actually, it says we, it's our responsibility. Am I correct in that? It's our responsibility.
Okay, then it's their responsibility to, to run the library. Is that right? Not ours?
Right.
Okay, so that's what I, I'm saying. We, we need to appoint our members, uh, to run the library. And you're, Ms. Martha, you the, what are you the?
She's the director.
Director of?
Well, I, I'm an employee, so I sort of live in a vice.
You're an employee, direct.
But I don't go on any policies or anything. I would make, I would draft language for the trustees to consider, and then we'd revise it as they see fit, and then we'd approve the final draft.
Okay.
But that's, that's my role.
I suggest then that you should listen to your board members. If they tell you not to do something, you ought not to do it. You know, don't put that stuff up on the walls and all that stuff. Whatever they do, I just, plain and day, I mean, you know, ain't the two ways, yes or no. You know, don't do this or don't do that.
Yes, that's what, that's what I.
But let's move on. Josh, I appreciate you coming, and thank you for coming. Now, we got Andrea Miller. Will you, five minutes? They supposed to be five minutes, but I take it whatever.
Mine, mine will be.
Thank you.
Under five minutes. Um, good afternoon. My name is Andrea Miller, and I am a Ware County citizen who resides in District Three. And I'm here to throw my hat in the ring. I realize that the library already has people that they've recommended, but, um, I also have an interest, if you see fit, um, to nominate me to fill any of the positions. I am a certified library media specialist with twenty years' experience, and I feel that I'm highly qualified to serve on the library board. As a media specialist, I am familiar with the American Library Association's ethics statement for public library trustees. I looked it up, read it, and so whether you choose me or someone else to be on the board, um, I wanted to mention three statements from that ethics statement from the American Library Association. First, trustees should not be swayed by partisan interests, public pressure, or fear of criticism. Second, trustees should not engage in discrimination of any kind. Third, trustees should support the efforts of librarians in resisting censorship of library materials by groups or individuals. Meaning, we have books for our LGBTQ community, we have books for our Christian community, we have books for everybody, everybody's represented at the library in the books. Um, and Winston Churchill once said, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." On May tenth, nineteen thirty-three, student groups at universities across Germany carried out a series of book burnings. They burned books that the leading Nazi party members associated with an un-German spirit. They had decided that because these books did not represent their beliefs, that they should be banned and nobody should be allowed to read them. And we all know how that turned out. So, as you select a new trustee to serve on the library board, I ask that you choose someone, whether it's me or someone else, who will stand against forms of censorship, because that is not what our country is based on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leach.
Thank you.
Okay. Ken Tatt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
How you doing?
I'm doing well, and you?
Good.
Good, and I have some handouts for you. For those who do not know me, my name is Ken Tatt. I reside at twelve Ten Shawnee Drive in Waycross. I grew up in Ware County in Millwood. In fact, just a few miles, I'm down the road from Pastor Lloyd's church. And I speak today because it's my understanding that this board has the intention of nominating Pastor Keith Lloyd to the library board. Over these last few months, I have listened to the hateful judgment and prejudicial, prejudicial lies that have been stated by both Pastor Lloyd and other members who are following him about a community that they do not know. Moreover, as a faithful Christian myself, I do not see any of Jesus, the Jesus that I have come to know, the Jesus who embraced the poor, the oppressed, even sinners, even tax collectors and sex workers. The one who commanded us all that we should love our neighbor as ourself. I do not hear any of that Jesus in the discriminatory statements that Pastor Lloyd has made publicly. And in this season of Advent, those who truly follow Jesus should recall that it was, in fact, the religious extremists who saw themselves as the supreme moral authority, who conspired with political leaders to crucify the Son of God. Pastor Lloyd has railed on social media against the inclusive mural in the library's foyer. There's a picture of that in your handout. Because it states libraries are for everyone, and because it promotes science, commerce, disability, recycling, and LGBTQ pride. He called this pure indoctrination to advance a perverse, godless, liberal agenda. At the same time, he has wrongly called a display promoting education about Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, as occultism. He later partially walked back those comments after others on social media pointed out that he was flat wrong in his assessment. Lloyd and others who have spoken out against any sign of LGBT plus inclusion at the library falsely and without evidence have labeled members of that community as sinners and abomination and even pedophiles. However, despite all the hateful rhetoric, they have not yet cited a single instance of a specific harm that has happened at the library. In fact, the closest any of those speaking out against the mural or pride flags, which by the way, as the director has mentioned, have come down, none of them have pinpointed an alleged harm, other than to say si, simply seeing the rainbow colors is offensive to them. They are using their religious beliefs to justify discrimination against a minority group, just like segregationists and anti-Semites have done in the past and continue to do today. What is clear from Pastor Lloyd's comments at prior library board meetings and on social media is that he has animus to members of the LGBT plus community, and wants all evidence of them removed from public life. There can be little doubt that if this commission places Pastor Lloyd on the board of the library, he will do all he can to not only remove symbols of LGBT plus inclusion in the library, he will seek to remove books and other content that makes reference to members of the LGBT plus community. In this day and age in which we have access to limitless information at our fingertips, the real strength of a public library is not just the books on its shelves. It is in the place and space that it provides to be a community center for all. The library is for bringing people together, fostering discussion, sharing ideas, and learning about ourselves and one another and the world around us. Our small communities are not like those in larger cities, where there are many spaces where the LGBT plus community can safely gather, and their support is proudly displayed. Here in Waycross or any of the other cities in the, in the system where library branches are, there are few public spaces where the LGBT plus community can gather freely. That is precisely why it is important to maintain an inclusive environment where all people are welcome. And other than the general complaint that the LGBT plus community exists and that they use the library, not even Pastor Lloyd or his followers can to, point to specific harm they've suffered. However, if this commission puts Pastor Lloyd on the library board, and he is able to censor LGBT plus content from the library, the board would be in violation of its own constitution, policies of the Georgia Public Library Service, and the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. The Okeechobee Regional Library System's constitution states, "No person shall be excluded from or denied access to the library on the basis of race, sex, creed, age, disability, cultural background, or national origin." The Georgia Public Library Service recognizes values and actively affirms the dignity of those it serves and its employees, regardless of heritage, education, beliefs, race, income, religion, gender, age, sexual orientation, or gender identity. The First Amendment Establishment Clause prohibits government from taking any action or making any law respecting the establishment of a religion. This clause not only forbids the government from establishing an official religion, but it also prohibits government actions that unduly favor one religion over another. According to the Supreme Court of the United States, the Establishment Clause was intended to erect a wall of separation between church and state. What Pastor Lloyd and his followers need to understand is that the public library is not their church. While he and his followers have the religious freedom to believe as they choose, they do not have the right to have their religious beliefs imposed upon others. Our country enshrined the principle of. Our country enshrined the principle of separation of church and state into our constitution to prevent the government from enacting laws like those that we saw on display at the FIFA World Cup where the host country of Qatar banned fans and players from wearing rainbow attire. Pastor Lloyd has made it clear that this is exactly what he intends to do, to ban even the mere display of the rainbow at the library. This commission should not place someone with such a divisive agenda on the library board. And if this board does so, it will be evidence that this body is explicitly endorsing Pastor Lloyd's discrimination and animus toward members of the LGBT plus community. Rest assured, if Pastor Lloyd is placed on the library board and is successful in carrying out his agenda, this commission will have placed both the library and itself in legal jeopardy. Thank you.
Mr. Taft, I got one question for you, and I don't want this to linger out here. And I'll start this off with, I know you, I respect you. But as a parent, taking everything we've just read and talked about, what Martha talked about, the other gentleman got up here and talked about, we're not wanting to exclude anybody. We want everybody to feel comfortable, we want everybody to feel safe, we want to include everybody, okay? But everybody means everybody.
I agree.
Okay. Now, my question to you, being a lawyer who passed the bar, you're practicing attorney.
Just down the hall from your wife.
Just down the hall, right. Now, if a, I've got a daughter, I've got a granddaughter, I've got a sister, I've got two nieces. And what they grow up to be is their business, it's not for me to judge, okay? I'm not speaking on a judgment portal here. What I'm asking is, is if one of them is in that library, the girls' restroom, and a gentleman walks in today who has never been at the library before, don't know anybody in that library, but he just walked in the door identifying himself as a woman and walks in that library where my sister, my niece, my granddaughter are in there. And I've been, I was caught for a long, long time. I worked these cases many, many times. What would be your stance on something like that? Should that be allowed?
Well, first of all, I think the question that you ask is actually flawed because I'm sure, as you recognize, if you truly did work cases that involve sexual abuse, most sexual abuse does not occur among, or is not perpetrated by members of the LGBT plus community. In fact, most.
No, no, I'm not.
No, no, hold on, hold on, let me answer your question. You asked the question, and I'd like to answer it. Most sexual abuse occurs between members of different genders and is not perpetrated by members of the LGBT plus community. So if, in fact, your goal as a commissioner is to protect the people most likely to be harmed, then it's actually probably heterosexual males that you need to worry the most about.
That's my question. That's what I'm talking about, the inclusivity, the allowing everyone. And my statement was, a man walks in the door today, you don't know him, Martha don't know him, none of the library workers know him.
So even hypothetically, I just want to be clear, is this a, is this a person who's purporting to go into a bathroom other than their sex assigned at birth?
Right. He just chooses today.
Right.
His reason, never been at our library before, and the reason I'm asking you this is because this has happened elsewhere. And it's not pointing the finger at the LGBT plus community, it's pointing the finger at those heterosexuals that are using y'all's platform as an excuse for them to do what they choose to do.
Well, there's plenty of laws that protect sexual abuse against children, and they apply.
But once it happens, that law.
But they apply equal.
Hold on a minute, I want to ask the council over there, do we have to listen to this?
Mr. Chairman, what we have is we have five minutes for the public to express their views to the commission. We certainly do not have to allow a back and forth discourse. I think one of our commissioners did start that, so Mr. Taft was just answering, I think, the question asked. So, but to your point is, we have been going for about an hour and forty minutes, or an hour and ten minutes now. And I think we do still have a few speakers to get through. So if it's the chairman's desire, if the commission's all in agreement, that we move along. I think Mr. Taft has certainly done a good job of making his point. And so we can hear from anybody else the commission would like to and move along with our agenda. I know we have a number of items on the agenda to address today.
Thank you, Council. I don't know nothing about nothing but males and females. I don't know nothing about all that other stuff y'all talking about. I went to school in the fifties and the sixties, they didn't, never heard nothing like that. They didn't teach us that in Maynor. So we'll have to move on and get away from that, but I don't know nothing about it. I'll be honest with all y'all. I don't, I don't know nothing about this transgender GBT or whatever. What the hell does that mean anyway? I don't know. So let's move on to Cheryl Jacobs.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Jacobs. I live at five eleven Folk Street here in downtown Waycross. I believe I'm in your district.
Okay.
One, yeah. I'm going into my third year, and it's been an honor to serve on the board as a trustee appointed by the city commission to the public libraries board. I'd like to start by saying that my comments are reflective of my experience serving on the library board, being a longtime patron of the library, as a library volunteer, and as a member of the Friends of the Library group. At the last council meeting, there were two people suggested for appointments to the library board. And these folks have a bit of controversy surrounding them after recent, recent library board meetings. The first person, a pastor with a large following, made multiple biased and derogatory posts on Facebook about library displays and what he personally deemed religiously inappropriate. From cultural displays to murals that represent everyone, these posts were inflammatory and meant to provoke anger from followings. There are screenshots of these posts, I believe you already have those. The second person suggested broke several rules of the library patron conduct policy during and after a board meeting by shouting at board members, harassing other patrons and staff after the meeting. She was seen telling Mr. Lucas what she feels needs to happen at the library and then invoking the name of her father-in-law, Chairman Thrift. So actions such as these do not represent our library board ethics that we must abide by while serving on this board, and all of those videos and everything are available on Facebook as well. Like many libraries, ours has come under scrutiny in previous years, but more so in the past years since certain religious groups were opposed to our all-inclusive, safe-space atmosphere as a place for all patrons. The overwhelming majority of those showing up to protest at the meetings don't even use the library services. Thankfully, the same government that gives them the freedom of religion and the freedom of speech also gives us separation of church and state and the freedom of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The library board is all-inclusive and actually already has two pastors on it, including Ms. Harris, who is the board chair and is up for reappointment today. If anything, we suffer from a lack of diversity, something which we're hoping to balance today with the recommended appointment of the highly qualified Janice Williams as our representative to the board. In my opinion, we certainly do not need someone appointed who wants to tear the library down to its foundations and cleanse the libraries of everything non-Christian because they feel that somehow the library's inclusiveness, acceptance of others' rights, and stance against censorship somehow make them feel marginalized and discriminated against in their religious beliefs. The truth is that the same protections that provide them their religious freedoms also provide others with the freedom not to conform to religious or society norms. You can't have one freedom without sacrificing the other. And at the last meeting, I was a little concerned because there were some demonstrably false statements made. Our ex officio appointment on the library board hasn't expressed a single concern at any point at any meeting and is on the record as having voted for every agenda item that was represented in that year supporting the libraries or for every one mural at the July meeting. It was stated that the library was not following their own procedures concerning board appointees and the makeup of that board. But this was actually mistaken. That was the American Library Association's Bill of Rights, and it was mistaken for the Waycross Warner County Public Library Constitution and Bylaws. Some other things were said, like we're having illegal meetings and the library had appointed three employees on the board, that we were not following our own procedures. And because these things were misread and probably inadvertently misinterpreted, these things have threatened the public trust in a trusted public institution. For this, there needs to be corrections made to those statements from your November meeting and possibly some education on more procedures for those that needed. But most of all, the library and the Board of Trustees deserves a public apology for this incorrect information that was given at a public and livestreamed meeting. I wholeheartedly support Ms. Harris being reappointed and the new appointee, the appointment of Janice Williams to the board, and urge you to appoint them as your representatives over those who represent a more radical views than the community as a whole believes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. All right. Mr. Bill Morris.
I will be less than five minutes.
Okay.
I want to begin by objecting to a man that has impeccable character being called a liar in this meeting. Keith Lloyd is a man that has served a church here for over twenty-five years. He's never been accused of anything wrong, and I'm ashamed that he's been accused today of being a liar. Secondly, my main purpose to be here is you do control the money that goes to the library. That's on, I know you can't go in and make all the policies and changes and everything like that. But the primary purpose of meeting here is to object to our tax dollars being spent to support the library. If the library is supporting and promoting homosexual agendas, which they are doing, tax dollars should never be used for promoting immoral lifestyles. There are numerous other objectionable policies besides those that have already been mentioned this afternoon. I encourage everybody to go home and review the policies of the library, and I think you'll be shocked at what the library is doing. Homosexual flags, as well as numerous other visual items promoting homosexuality, have been commonly accepted and promoted in the forefront of our library. In two previous library board meetings, a large number of citizens have stood and voiced their concerns and opposition to the practices of our public library promoting this ungoverned lifestyle. A male may think and identify himself as a female. A female may think and identify herself as a male. However, what we think about ourselves does not change truth and reality. We do not live in a fairy world. My dog and cat may think they are human. I may think they're human, but in reality, they are not human. And if I list my dogs and cats as human dependents on my income tax, I'll spend time in jail or pay a high fine. I may, I may identify myself as a policeman or a Supreme Court judge. There are serious consequences when I impersonate an officer of the law or an officer of the court. Pretending to be something that we are not is for children, not for adults. Please stop spending our tax dollars on our, on our public library and allowing them to use the county building if they persist in promoting sexual fantasies that are not reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions? Council, we have to appoint.
Correct. As we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, this board, being the Board of Commissioners, is, I mean, you obviously have funding to the library, so you are a funding source. So therefore, we have three appointments, two of which are up currently, and I believe on the agenda tonight. And then we have an ex officio member because of the funding. So, yes, that's, that's what we're here to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, I asked management a question. How much money do we contribute to the library every year?
Uh, I believe it's around two, two hundred fifteen thousand a year, something like that.
Two fifteen?
It's like eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars a month.
That's what I thought it was.
Okay. When is these members, when, when, when's the due date on those to be appointed?
Well, I talked to Ms. Martha earlier, the second one that I mentioned her now.
Right.
Well, we have appointed, Timmy is our member of the vote.
Because he just had a year term, so you would have to reappoint him on a yearly basis if he hopefully still wants to serve on the board, because there's been so much nonsense last year.
I've learned a lot.
Well, that was.
We asked Timmy if he would to give, appoint, or bring us the names that he wanted us to appoint. Okay. Do you have them, Timmy? The names you want to appoint?
Not all, not all of them.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to that, I think what we need to do is just go through our regular agenda items on our work session. I know this is top of everybody's minds just because we've had so many public comments on it, but we do have a number of other agenda items. If we could address those, and then when we get to that agenda item, we would.
Okay, but we, we need to know his names. What I was going to ask him is to have those names at the meeting for the appointees. That's what I'd like, like to do, the ones he's going to have.
Have you sent out a copy of the resume for each one of the people that's been appointed?
I haven't. We haven't received anything. We did receive a letter, I believe, the first. You received that email, the email that I sent you from Ms. Andrea.
Yeah.
Why can't we table this thing until our next meeting, till you can get us a copy of the resume before we can read each individual's qualification? I have not seen nothing on anybody's other than an email on one person, I think.
Ms. Andrea.
On, on your appointees, that's what I was asking you, do you give us a name and their resume of the appointees that you, that we want to appoint, or do you want us to appoint?
Okay.
And, and the members.
Let me get the resume.
I don't think it's really.
It's not his position.
Yeah, but he's got to ask for it. He's got to bring them to us.
What I'm saying is, he's the ex officio member.
Yeah.
All right, then we as a commission, we may have someone out of our district or someone we know individually that we want to put on that, and we can throw them all into the hopper.
That's right.
And we all vote on them. But Timmy is not really his, uh.
Well, he's, we, we asked him the other day though to bring them to us, didn't we?
No, not Timmy.
To the name.
He can have a recommendation, but.
We had, we had recommended that he bring them to us, to the ones that want to be on it or going to be appointed to.
What I'm saying, just like Steve may have somebody, I mean, Jerry may have someone, I may have someone, and then we just bring them all in there. And like I say, I think it's a good thing, like to have a resume, something.
Right.
About that individual.
Okay.
But also, Scott, did the city contribute anything toward the library funding?
Yes, sir, but I don't, I don't know what that amount is. Do you know, Martha, about?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The city has.
The city, uh, agreed whenever the law changed where you couldn't duplicate services, um, the county took over the city's responsibility. So they fund, but indirectly. Through whatever that arrangement was, but one was the rest of the twelve.
Yeah, that was through the lost agreement.
Okay.
Okay. We need to get. Okay. We need the resume on the ones that want to be appointed.
So you, you won't table it until the next meeting?
We're going to table it until we get the resumes to the ones that want to be appointed.
Can we have another meeting tomorrow? No, sir, we have one, the first regular meeting in January, and that would be before their next board meeting, so it would be. You also in January would have to reappoint or appoint an ex officio member because that's done annually. And, and Commissioner Lucas is the appointee as it stands now.
As of now, okay.
He will be next year too.
All right. Any more on that? Not, we'll table it, let's do it. Okay. Agenda items. Appointment to the Region Five Adversary Council Department for the Behavioral Health and Development Disability.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Ms. Lisa Gillis attends. She, okay, she's here.
Is she here?
Good, good.
Okay.
And you all wanted to meet her from the last meeting?
Yeah.
She was, she was recommended to be appointed, so.
Okay.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Gillis.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for coming, Ms. Gillis.
Sure. I'm Lisa Gillis. I live at thirteen ten Truman Street. My husband and my twenty-four-year-old special need.
My husband and my 24-year-old special needs son. I am the parent mentor for Brantley County Schools, which means I serve the families of students with disabilities. I have a child with a disability, and I also teach special education. So as a part of that community, I was asked to be a member of the Regional Advisory Council for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. I served in that capacity when I lived in Pierce County. And I believe, uh, Mr. Bryant Wiggins served in that capacity for Ware County at that time. He resigned, and then I moved to Ware County. So they asked that I come through the Ware County Commissioner's office to be, uh, reappointed back to the community. And so that's why I'm here.
Where's your address?
1310 Truman Street.
It's my address. Is you, I'm good.
Okay, I'm good. Would you, any, anybody else?
No, yeah.
And what I'll do is report back to you quarterly. We meet quarterly, um, what is going on in the world of behavioral health with the community service boards and the Medicaid waiver system. I'm not sure if you're, how familiar you are with that, but it's the services and resources available to families and students with disabilities. And I can report back to you any changes or any news periodically.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
Thank you.
We're going to put that on the agenda. Let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. B, purchase request for information technology equipment for the tax.
Who is, uh, Mr. Carlos Jamie's going to give you a rundown.
Okay, that's.
E I. Right, yes. All right, so what we're doing here is we're, we've got a, the field that's in front of you or that's in the book to look at. Um, we're looking at the virtualization environment here and improve the computer capacities that we have for all county applications that are loaded. And mainly, that's what the whole gist of the, um, is now.
Okay.
So what are you?
I think based on what you were, and the information we had, a lot of stuff we got is kind of like antiquated.
Antiquated, correct.
And you're trying to really bring, get us up to speed.
Trying to refresh everything and bring it up to.
Okay, I think that's commendable because that's something that's kind of overused in a sense.
And this is a five-year plan, so in the next five years where we evaluate it and then go from there.
Okay.
What is the total cost of all this?
It's about $109,000.
$18,000?
$109?
$109,000, yes, sir.
And that's just for the tax office?
No, that's for the whole county.
That's for the whole system?
Yeah, for the whole system, for the whole county's information technology systems.
And Scott, if I'm not mistaken, don't we have some ARPA money that can be used for that?
Yes, sir, that, it can be funded up from ARPA.
Well, didn't we have some money to use splosh for technology?
Uh, we did, and I believe that was in, well, for the next coming up splosh we do. But what we had in the 2014 splosh was spent. There wasn't really much money put in there, but that was, gosh, almost 10 years ago.
I think this came up when we moved into this new building.
It did. It was, uh, I, I knew then or learned then that we had equipment that needed to be replaced and upgraded that was getting more or less into its, uh, ending its life cycle.
Right.
How well do you know this company?
Sir?
Have you dealt with them before?
Yes.
This company here?
Yeah, we, well, we did, well, this is HP Products. So we went through HP Implement, Infrastructure Design Team. And so they did the whole design implementation on this.
You trust it?
Yes.
Is this a state contract? We won't have to bid it out?
Yes, sir.
Well, they don't, what did they bid it on this call over?
Well, it says it's under state contract.
No, sir, that, when it's under state contract, the state of Georgia's already bid, bid out certain types of equipment, and it's in their, so, uh, in their, uh, what's called a purchasing co-op.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So this isn't just a bunch of equipment cobbled together just to get by? This is a real integrated system?
This is the, for the next five years, implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Just to bring us up to date.
All right.
This is good.
I got, I got one other question for you. Have you been able to finish up the old building and getting all the stuff out of the old central office over there?
Yes, we're down to just one part of the court system moving over, and then we're, we'll be off of that, out of that building.
So we'll be ready to tear it down within how long?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
How long will people be able to tear it down?
Well, as soon as he gets that out, that, I'm hoping by sometime first spring of next year to be able to take that building down.
Okay.
Is this going to satisfy the judge?
Yeah, that's.
It's going to satisfy him?
That's going to take care of that.
Yes, it will.
What about, is Ms. Melba too?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll, it'll satisfy them, isn't it? Okay, all right, that's good.
So we're good, Carlos, but good work.
Got it.
Thank you, Carlos.
Appreciate it. All right, let's move on.
Okay, uh, under tab C, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's a purchase request for a fire department brush truck. The one that we have has a blown engine. It's a 2008 model. And, uh, this is for a request to purchase one. I know that Mr. Cox is here, he could tell you, and also maybe the fire chief on what the condition of this present truck is.
Okay, Barry, come on up now.
It's just a 2008, and an engine force around almost $17,000 to, you know, to a engine back end. And it's got a few other things to, it would have to be done to bring it up, you know, for where it would be in good shape. I was looking around $20,000, you know, and my concern was spending that much on an over truck, you know? That's why we actually got a price on, uh, on another truck, and that's off a state contract. How much did you use it and what did you?
Do y'all use that thing? I mean, that's only used occasionally though, and.
On all brush fires, excuse me, brush fires and wood fires. It's the pickup truck that has the 300-gallon tank on it in the back with a 10-gallon foam tank. And it's the one that we use where we can go, it's full of the job, where you can go into the fields. And we use it a lot up and down railroad tracks when the trains get going because we can't take a truck down there.
Right.
So this, it's got well over 100,000 miles on it. And it's just, over the last year, Mr. Barry can tell you, we've had repair after repair after repair after repair on it. But it's probably one of the most used trucks that we have because of all the, it goes to smaller fires and some things we don't have to send an engine to if we send this truck to. It's just, we just, it's just, it's 2008, it's just been used so much. It's just, we've got the giddy out of it.
Yeah. Well, that's a lot of money to pay for that thing.
How much to put a factory engine in it? How much to put a factory engine in it?
The engine has almost split us, it's like $16,000, something, I think, for an engine. The problem is, is the type of engine is, you can't hardly find a reman engine for anywhere. And you might have to go to a dealer to get an engine. If we can find a reman engine, I'd say around $10,000 to $12,000. And then the other problem is, is you have to pull the cab off of it to put an engine in. And I'm not really set up at the shop, which I got a port of it. I'll get it off somehow. You know, by the big, very well, we don't do it.
Yeah, I get that. I know today is hard to work on something, you know? Elder Michigan myself, we used to would have built it under the oak tree and not. And went back to work really, but can't do that today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Dee, can you explain also, I mean, the one you say we have is a 2008, and the engine, just save, for conversation's sake, $20,000, just to get the engine, not counting the time it's going to take to change it out? All right, so, and the one you're talking about is a 2022, which will have, what, five, four or five-year warranty with it?
Have a factory warranty.
Have a factory warranty with it. And the only thing I can think about is when I first come on the commissioning fire truck, and I think about the engine, and we were debating about whether, you know, buy another truck or buy crate engine or have it, the engine rebuilt. I think we opted to try to rebuild the engine, right? Which, it's still been a problem with that truck ever since. So basically, we kind of like, I won't say wasted money, but we, it could have been better spent towards if we could have went and bought a new engine, which would have cost more, but we'd have had a warranty and all that with it. So I think we need to think about that too when we start talking about putting, as I say, putting the new wine in the old skins and all this kind of stuff. And so actually, we'd be spending about, what, $40,000 more to get a new truck versus getting the, uh, one with the, replacing the engine in it, and you still got an old truck, basically.
But we, we put a new engine in, we still got a 2008 model truck. That's just as usual, I mean, this.
Can you buy a cabin chassis and put that machine on it?
That's just a cabin chassis. I'm sure we'll have to take all the stuff.
You got to put it over on it.
Right.
Okay, that.
Body and, uh.
That's a new cabin chassis?
Sure.
That's for a new cabin chassis, not for your body?
About the same.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want? Not, we'll carry those to the meeting, see what we do with it. Okay, let's move on. First request for public work heavy equipment.
Yes, sir, this is one we were going to pull off the agenda for more evaluation.
Let's, let's take that off.
Yes, sir. And then the next item there is the, uh, the appointments for the library that y'all asked to.
Trustees, we ain't going to do that. We're going to take, carry it over. All right. Commission items, y'all got anything? County manager report?
I don't have anything, no, sir.
Okay, I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting.
A motion?
Yes, we got a motion and a second all in favor. Motion to, meeting adjourned.
We're going to take far as 15.
Take about fifteen.
Okay. Tell us uh order. This is our. It's five fifteen, five nineteen, but we're gonna start the meeting. This is under a public hearing and uh James, you gonna come up? Tell us about it.
Yes, sir. Famous chairman commissioners. This is a request from Mr. Uh Mr. Richard Lee on behalf of Ryland Environmental. To um approve a waste transfer station at thirty-two thirty Smith Drive. The waste transfer station is approved as permitted as a conditional use in the zoning ordinance. Uh and that's why we're here is the commission actually has to approve it. Around this item was presented to the planning commission. On November tenth, twenty twenty-two, and the Waycross Planning Commission, they recommended approval. Um in your staff report is the conditions. Uh it's on the third page. Um and it's seven oh six point three conditional uses. And it says that wa- recycling and waste reduction transfer operation provided that all such operations are conducted within enclosed building. Or within an area enclosed on all sides with a solid brick, concrete block or solid wood board fence not less than eight feet in tall in height. Um and it goes on to say that if he joins, that district does not permit that use. Then the operation has to be two hundred feet away from that that property line. Um the property is on GI General Industrial. And on the eastern side, it is on LI. So he would have to stay two hundred feet from that LI district. So he would have to move the operation to the western side of the property, which would be. Um towards the curve here. Brown Drive comes out or Smith, Smith Drive comes back up down the hill. Um he has roughly six acres there. Um and then as stated before, he would have to put a solid wood fence or concrete block fence. A solid fence eight, at least eight feet in height around this property to do that. Or he would have to put that operation inside of an enclosed building. So and if you know what the waste transfer, what they do is basically bring in the waste off the trucks, is dump on a concrete slab. Usually in a three-sided building, uh possibly two-sided building. And then it's compacted, I think, and then put, put on a semi truck and uh and haul to a landfill.
Okay. It, and that's what? Is 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 everything in order? It, I mean.
He would meet the requirements. He would just have to put up.
Need to meet them. But they're don't, they're not there now.
They're not there now. It's just, it's uh storage containers now. And I guess business office for Ryland in this area.
So it is this pretty much like it is out there now when you go to the landfill out there at the uh at Ryland, out there uh.
Public. Public. It's a similar operation as that.
Republic got one.
Public.
Right, they have.
Transfer.
Well, I know you say like the building, then you're back and it's on concrete and the.
It it would be a similar operation. You have scales you go on, scale you um scale your things. And Mr. Lee's here, he can talk to more if there if there's gonna be a public over to the public, if it's gonna be just for Ryland, I'm not sure.
Okay. I'll let him hear what he got.
Has he? Has the development authority been in on this?
I spoke to um, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name.
Do they know about it?
The developer. I I spoke to um the director. Who's the director?
Jason Ruben Bar.
Jason Ruben.
And I did speak to him. Um I have not heard back from him on that. I did speak to Daniel Morse and uh he sort of kind of iffy on it, but I haven't really had a formal meeting with it. It's been posted in paper and it's been posted on site out there.
Okay, I talked to Jason three days ago, I think it was. And has he reached out to you, Mr. Lee?
No.
But he's supposed to talk with their board about trying to find a piece of property that'd be more suitable. Maybe to do a property switch with them. You know, to get out of, you know, get out of the general area where it is made away from the baking camp and stuff like that.
He is not, I mean, he, I saw him at the bank one day and he said that he needed to reach out to me, but I have not heard from him. So I'm sure he's busy trying to catch up on it.
Okay, I think Mr. Lee, or maybe you can help me out here. Been a while, but didn't you come pretty much, was it getting the rezoning or something?
Yes, I came before and asked for just to get a rezon. You know, did, y'all did that for us. Y'all got a rezone because of requirements for transfer station. Has, it was limited. Industrial has to be uh general industrial. Y'all did rezone it and that would allow us to make this next step. I did also, so the property is suitable for a transportation. It's uh it's got something I like. It's got the sewer across the back corner, but you could drop the leachate with the leachate that smelly that comes out of garbage. You could drop that directly into the sewer and get rid of it there, which is uh Republic has a little different situation. We can build it a different way. Take care of that smell. Um.
They would have to have a monitoring system there though, wouldn't they? The city, I mean, you'd have to have a, you'd have to put in a monitoring station to monitor that water, wouldn't you?
You have to to know how much you put in there.
Right, you gotta do it with a monitor with a light.
It's usually not that much.
Um. Yeah.
But so the process, as I understand it, is we had to go before the planning commission and then before you. But also I did something else that uh I went ahead and talked to EPD and actually had EPD permit. That has no uh, it's not valid at all until you approve it. So I wasn't trying to go around you. I just wanted to remove that doubt whether or not we could have one again. The EPD has approved it. It's just a notification process.
Do you wanna, you you wanna put it there then?
I'd like to put it there.
Instead of going somewhere else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd just like for it to happen quicker than later. I know sometimes we we push it down the road and it might be another year making other two.
Well, now, James, it it's gotta have these improvements before it can be put to do that, though, right?
It's gotta have your approval.
The this.
No, talking about the improvement as far as.
Improvement on like the fence and are you willing to do all of that?
Part of build, that'd be part of building it. You'd have to impose on three sides. We'll put up eight-foot fence. You got to keep two hundred feet off the highway and there's room for that. It's like almost four hundred feet. We can push it back and still have right at two hundred feet of the building in the back corner.
Okay. And uh and okay, and if you go with the disposal of the sewer, then you're gonna have to do a, well, I believe it's a monitoring station, ain't it? They do it with a light, the flow, tells how many gallons run in it.
There's, I I was told.
Yeah, electronic.
Have to meter it in and.
Yeah, it's a meter.
How many gallons. It wouldn't, wouldn't try to slip it in there.
That's right. I've I've installed some of those things and it has to be done with a.
So I'll just hear.
It does with an ultrasonic light thing.
I guess the only thing I've, you know, you say about the development authority and all that, say somebody has some.
Well, last year, remember like last year, there 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 was opposition to it. Through the development authority and all that, changed hands a couple of times since then. The board is probably still the same. I'm not sure where the board laid in on that. So I don't know the feelings of that.
Can we table this to the next meeting and give him the tools, give Jason a chance to come before the board and state? I think for us to go ahead and vote this in all of a sudden, they'll come in and say, no, we don't want, we don't want to ruin our whole south part of industrial park.
Yeah.
We can't vote it in yet because he's not even qualified. I mean, he ain't got the fences up.
No, I mean, we had to vote it in first, then he got, then he fixed it.
And then I started fixing the stuff. But yeah, whatever y'all, I I just appreciate y'all hearing it and and considering it. And if we need to, for it to be done right, I think it's probably gonna need getting it through by the way.
Yeah, I I I think that would be the best thing. That way we won't have to come back and revisit it, you know? I mean, once we know all minds are clear, then we can move forward and.
That's the way I wanna do it.
Right.
I I emailed Jason this morning. He said that um that he would try his best to be here. He said it had some other things that were lined up, but yes, sir.
If you remember, the development authority sold his property under a cloud. They weren't clear on exactly what was going to happen. And then when they sold it and Richard came for um rezoning. Janet Dyke came and asked the commission, please don't rezone it. We don't want that over there. It's right across the street from the um egg roll plant. Um. So uh they should be here and make those statements, you know? I won't vote for it because I would think it's um not a a good location. And at that time, Richard, if you remember, Jana was gonna get with you and y'all make a swap if possible.
Right.
Up on Roberts Road or somewhere uh more isolated. But so I don't, I don't understand the development authority on, if they say anything to you, Ms. Chairman, you're on.
No, they, I I hadn't been brought up. The the board, we we hadn't heard anything on it.
How many have gotten with Daniel?
You talked to Richard? I mean, Jason?
Uh, yeah, I did text him and called him and asked him to meet, but he couldn't. And that was just, what's today? Monday? It was like last Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, I I'll talk to Jason about that too. I, let me do that. Let's table it and and we'll get back with you on it.
Another another month or just just all uh Daniel with you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Richard, we appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, let's uh. All right, let's close out that public hearing. I hear a motion to close that.
So move, Jim.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Public hearing, all in favor, our meeting has been closed. Now we at the regular meeting, five thirty-one. So it'd be the five o'clock meeting. We running a little late. We're gonna open this meeting up. And we've already did a pledge of allegiance prayer. We're gonna move on.
Roll call.
We'll do a, a roll call. All right, let's do a roll call for the meeting. Mr. Burst.
President.
Mr. Pope.
President.
Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Barnard.
President.
Cheers, you. Okay. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard. Okay. Now, and we don't have the guest speakers and go on any of them. So the items, approve the meetings for the minutes of November the twenty-second, work session, regular meeting. Uh, November the fourteenth, so I have a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes and minutes for November twenty twenty-two, the work session, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Regular meeting, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
You got a motion in a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go on to uh. The agenda items. Appointment to the Region Five Advisory Advisory Council Department of Behavioral Health and Development. This is it. Okay? Now, Mr. Jacobs is asked to. I hear a motion to appoint.
Move our appointments, Lisa Gillis to the um Region Five Advisory Council.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for Ms. Gillis. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Gillis has been appointed. Okay. Purchase request information technology equipment for the DTAC Center. Okay, now. Let's find that thing. Do we have a motion to, or is any discussion on it? Let's have a motion first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We purchased the uh brush truck for the fire department for the seven or sixty-four thousand.
Well, B and Z. Hold on, we on the, we on the.
On the computer stuff.
E I, that.
That.
Computer.
Somebody said brush truck.
You ready to go home this week?
No, nobody said brush truck.
This is a.
That for information technology equipment and.
Yeah, that and technology equipment for that, for this radio system. I hear a motion on it.
Well, I got one question for make a motion on it. Now, is this locking us in on a contract where we pay monthly or?
No, it's just a straight out purchase.
Just straight out purchase.
Basically, equipment and software.
So it's not that?
No.
And he's gonna install it, right?
Yes, sir.
So we just purchasing this equipment for our man to install.
Be shipped here and then they'll install it, IT department.
Is that, I I haven't read this thing. Is there a warranty and all with it? Is it?
I'm sure there's a manufacturer warranty with H P being a very reputable uh I T company.
Okay.
Yes.
What's the total amount on the system?
Uh.
A hundred and six or a hundred and nine?
I think it's a hundred and nine thousand.
Hundred and, yeah.
Hundred and nine thousand?
How much was it?
Should be in the motion.
So that's in, it's in a separate, it's a separate caveat from what the sheriff's department's on, right?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir, altogether.
Okay.
It's under B over there. This. Yeah, it's uh several items really. I I guess there's a total on it, one hundred and, what'd you say? One oh nine?
One hundred and nine.
Okay.
Total of one oh nine.
All right, we have a motion.
But we approved the purchase of the um I T equipment as presented um by the. I T department manager in amount of one hundred and nine thousand dollars from the.
Sheila Packer.
Let's see what their name is.
And the company is proposed by the manager. And the company is proposed by the manager.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, we got a we got a motion and a second. Is any discussion on it now? Now, when will this stuff, uh I'd like to know, what's the uh date, the delivery date on it? Is there?
That I don't know, but I just know that they got better with shipments, but I know we're, he's probably a few months out before all this will start rolling in.
I know everything, it seems like sort of now is sometimes six months or a year. I never.
Yep.
So, but.
Mr. Chairman, could the minutes reflect that the?
He don't have a delivery date on it, do he?
Can the minutes reflect that ARPA funds as recommended by the manager would be used for the purchase?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You gonna add that to it. Alright, is there not, can it buy the whole thing? I mean, can it pay a hundred percent of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Keep checking with that ARPA fund pretty good. It ought to be coming when it does.
Whittle it down, mate.
The the county's received seven million dollars. And then we got other funding that was put on the cares money and a good portion of it's left too.
That's good.
So, and that's, and it it could be used for these these items that would heal, especially now that splosh hasn't taken effect yet.
Alright. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, we ha- we got a motion. We have a second.
I second it.
Okay, got a second. Alright. Let's vote on it. Mister Burris.
Aye.
Mister Pope.
Uh.
Mister Lucas.
Aye.
Mister Barnard.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the brush truck. The purchase request for the fire department brush truck. Are we gonna buy the truck or rebuild it or what?
I make a motion, we buy the truck.
I second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? Okay, let's vote on it. Mister Burris.
Aye.
Mister Pope.
Uh.
Mister Lucas.
Aye.
Mister Barnard.
Aye.
Chair vote down. Alright. Now, we're going, we took the uh
That one will be.
Tough work, equipment off. Okay, appointment to the library board of trustees.
Can, for uh for the record, can we uh can we just get a motion and second? Actually, the the next three, D, E, and F would be tabled based on what you all said during the work session and public hearing. And just motion a second to table them and that way makes it official.
Which one now? D, E, and F?
Yes, sir.
Is let's uh table them?
Yep, we just get a motion.
Because we can't appoint them. No way right now, can we? We don't have the resumes and all that.
That's all move, Mr. Chairman. We table uh D, E, and F from the December twelfth, regular month and meeting. Table it.
Okay, I have a motion to table D, E, and F.
I'll second that.
Until January meeting. Okay. Now, the motion and a second. Any discussion? Nothing on it? Alright. Let's vote on it. Mister Burris.
Aye.
Mister Pope.
Uh.
Mister Lucas.
Aye.
Mister Barnard.
Aye.
Chair votes out. Okay. County manager report. You got any report?
Um, no, sir. The only thing I wanted to mention, well, well, actually, two things. Uh, on the overpass project, uh, there was some discussion about uh maybe doing a uh the RFQ um to look at other uh design engineers. Um, with this, is that something the commission want to do or do we want to move forward with uh the?
I'm glad you brought that up, mate.
Now, I will say too that we sent, I sent out a new schedule after they left from our presentation the next morning. And they were able to trim off about six months of that schedule, so it's down to thirty months.
This is a big project. And I I feel, and some of us ask me, you ain't got more than one engineer bidding on it? I mean, you know, so we we, this is a large project and we already know that we can't get it built tomorrow. So I suggest that we put this thing out on all of the broadcast or whatever we gotta do, advertisements for an engineer rather than just take one. I mean, I think we, he's a good engineer. Maybe he'll get it. But we do need to, we we spending taxpayer's money and they gonna want to know why we didn't ask for another another uh opinion on this thing.
I concur with that.
Uh, so I think we should ask another opinion.
How much have we've already spent on this?
We gave him ten thousand dollars to make the preliminary growth. I remember that. So that's all we've put in it.
Roughly six months, bid processed, and then whoever used to bid, if it's a different company, it's probably gonna take them six months to come up with their plan. But I'm sure this company are gonna, not gonna let them have the information.
Yeah, they will, they will probably come in.
They don't need their information. We're the bridge. He'll be his own information. It ought to be an engineer in Jacksonville or Atlanta, Savannah.
So you're looking at probably another nine months before.
It'll take uh altogether, take probably roughly about four months, starting with advertising, receiving them, going through the proposal, because typically they will come in and and talk with the commission and present their proposal, especially for something this size.
Yeah, we have many companies out there that deal with this type of.
But almost you'll find are in metro areas, Atlanta, Jacksonville, Orlando, those places like that.
Yeah.
Should they be, doesn't D R T have a list of?
They do.
Certified design engineers?
Yep, we we uh Brandon uh contacted someone to try to go ahead and get a copy of RFQ that we could use and change for us and send it out for advertisement.
Right. Being as far as you give, I think we're we're gonna spend our money. We don't need to just pick an engineer ourselves. I mean, one of us pick one. I mean, I I don't prefer that. See, you you don't let that happen. Let's ask for some more opinions. We're gonna, we're gonna spend.
I was just asking questions. I didn't say one way or the other. I'm sorry. I just asked a question.
Well, it needs to be advertised.
Well, as long as we understand, it's gonna just drag it out longer. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I'm I'm ready.
Well, he's three years from bidding it, so I don't, I mean, we can wait three years and probably still catch him.
Whatever the board wants.
It don't matter. They haven't made no pri- no promises on how they anticipate to do it, so.
Yeah, but I don't want to hear people out there on the wire, y'all start, and why y'all start? Yeah, because.
Y'all lost to build theirs in six months.
Could be some upset.
We're gonna, if we. We let him, who has already said December twenty-five, bid date. That's a long time. I say let's uh let's find out if there's any uh some more engineers. That's all I'm asking.
Now, you're talking about Albany Avenue Bridge, right?
Yeah, anymore. Yeah, on Albany Avenue Bridge. We're gonna get the bridge built, but let's advertise for engineers on it. Y'all, for that.
That's fine.
What's the feel of that damn seat?
What you think about it?
What's the feel of that damn seat? See what's out there?
See what's out there. Okay.
See who wants to work, who don't.
If it, we don't get any, then we'll take, we we'll go anywhere.
As they come in like a presentation, we know who they are, based on their reputation too.
Okay. We'll see his resume and his proposal, see what he says. Okay.
And the other little thing is, we, I sent out a new revised um elmig list, the roads, to try to narrow it down to the the uh roughly about one point five mi, and I emailed those out to you. So if you want, once you look at those, then I can put it on the next meeting for y'all to.
Well, you sent out today.
Sir.
You sent it out today?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was right here. I thought it.
Yeah, I'm not a media copy, but I sent it out to you because I didn't know.
You saw that. Is it in here?
Right.
No, sir.
It's not in there.
No, it's not.
I had, so, yeah, I I.
I just, I emailed it out about ten, ten thirty this morning.
Okay.
On that list you have, you have an amount, an estimate.
Correct.
Whatever that includes. Is that the total of those, of the streets? Or is that the total pot we've got to draw out of based on your projections? Which one is it?
That, that's the total of the streets, the cost estimate.
So we don't have how much money is actually available to us?
No, not at this point, because we got the elmig, and it's a million twenty-eight thousand and some odd change.
This was like four and a half million.
Well, that was.
That's because I had thick pin right up. They would put them out of the state. That should have went in on the T splosh or regular. I'm gonna put that in T splosh in in uh, I want that in January. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna put the thick pin. Thick pin shouldn't be on the elmig thing. It shouldn't be in the elmig. No, 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 we're going in the.
We took, we took that one out and it dropped.
The regional, that's going in the regional.
Yep.
Region.
Now, did it get approved again?
Long as it gets on somebody's list, we're gonna get it on there. Because I I didn't rode down that lane.
Uh, not that I heard, but I'm pretty sure it will.
I mean, there was only three that had said yes before.
There was eight, there was eight turned in. There was probably at least ten by now.
Okay.
I got one other thing I want to say. I looked at the new, the uh district draw lines. And I didn't notice Solomon Sixth Street and all of that was in my district. I was thinking it was the jury's district.
Solomon.
Solomon, other than Burstfield, oh, that's my district.
I didn't know, I didn't know that.
No, it ain't.
Is it?
Yes.
Yep, it drops that low, yeah.
The new district lines I've drawn last year put it in my district.
Well.
I have got.
You need to get my district.
Yeah, we'll make sure they have your number.
Yeah, we could've.
Got Kenny on him.
I think when you send them my mail.
Randy back there, can he just give us a little short synopsis on Tanner Lane out there, have everything going out there? We don't, we just want to give them a short synopsis on Tanner Lane. We don't want to feel left out.
Tanner Lane?
Yeah.
So uh they've uh got the crane brought in and it's set up and uh they're waiting on the uh precast um to start their pile test, waiting for the piles to be delivered. And they told me two weeks in a row they were expecting them to be bigger than next week. But um as Chairman talking about earlier, things are getting pushed back these days on deliveries and um so I were hoping we'll get it this week and they can do their test piles and and get started. They said that we're gonna start building the work bridge so that they'll have a way to um access the the Wind Clay side from Jamestown with material. They've got to paint at least one and maybe even two uh possible water pit sites on the the Jamestown side and put the work bridge in and they're able to access everything and get across creek and every process of doing that.
That's saving a bunch of time and money right there.
Yes, sir. And then also keep them off of our uh county roads, paved county roads in the area.
Frontier State.
And tearing up a bunch of roads so if they can um get 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 across that creek, that'll help us a lot.
Yeah, so everything's rolling on pretty good?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I like the thing that sounded like a weekly thing of whatever, you know, what the progress has been going on. I don't know who responds, but I think that's, that's a good thing to have.
We'll give some more pictures. We had a V O T training this week and uh some other issues uh came about on Friday, so we'll try to get some more progress pictures taken and sent out to the officer.
Okay, yeah.
Working on.
Smith Road coming along good, but see they hold up there. They can't move the power poles. They can't, they say, oh, yeah, can't get no wire.
Can't get no wire.
No, and they, they probably just sitting in the base.
Transformers, wire, even the poles themselves, they're having a hard time coming up with materials. And I think the big storm down in Florida hasn't helped with any of that stuff either. And uh the Georgia Power Man told me that and meeting with him last week, so he corroborated what the uh S- Sutilo was telling me, the R E M secret. Um, so there is a problem with.
Yeah, there's a problem with material. That's all I.
Arises and miscellaneous talks and pieces to do all kinds of stuff right now. Concrete pipe is killing us on some of our projects right now.
G A T X is waiting on a train load out there and their boys holding rock out there every day. They got spots. They can't even put their pipe in. I mean, you know, it's been like eight, six months.
They, it would, it would take six months for.
It's a messed up job because they can't get no pipe.
Concrete pipe as well.
Yeah.
Same thing on City Boulevard. They waited about nine months on it.
Okay.
What's the status on the?
Thank you, Brandon.
Was there a fire department building? You heard any updates on it?
No, sir. I need to get my source on that metal building company over there and try to find out what the, what's going on with it.
Why can't we just put out bids on it?
We could.
Wouldn't that be the best way to do it? We might bid it out anyway, aren't we?
On the uh.
Yes, sir. It's probably gonna be twenty-five, seventy-seven dollar project.
And we're not gonna put it on the same foundation. We're gonna put it on a new foundation.
Put another foundation down, yeah.
Oh, what, they're gonna tear that bill down and put that on?
Yeah. We're gonna do the metal building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the metal building. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Brandon. Okay, any more?
Uh, no, sir, that's it. I just wanted to mention congratulations to uh the Ware County Football Team for holding a five A state championship.
Fourteen. That's great.
Yeah.
How hard it be getting football team to catch our next meeting?
Okay. You want all hundred and ten in here?
We got.
I don't see what I mean. Hey, they, everyone of them want it. They a team.
Single.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be good.
My grandson would be here.
My grandson would be here.
Yeah.
I mean, the quarterback sophomore, running back sophomore, so.
Yep.
I mean, it was a team win. It wasn't a, just a senior.
Yeah. I may draft a proclamation too.
I was about to say, could we put something, you know, just to the team from the county?
Okay.
Dad or either will meet them somewhere, and otherwise we have big enough room, maybe out in school or something, another.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Word.
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
I mean, it's first one. Let's go in history.
Yeah.
So we need to make a bit, I think we need to make a big deal out of it.
Yeah.
Y'all can play ball later.
It's time for y'all supper radio.
That's it. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, any more, manager?
No, that's right, that's it.
Okay, commission. Okay, I I would like to say one thing I want to ask that, when is our next meeting?
Mark, uh, excuse me, uh, January ninth, I think.
January the ninth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, could we get all of the uh resumes and the ones that we want to appoint for the library board?
I'll have them, yes.
Will, will somebody, that's what I was trying to say, what I go, will you take that responsibility and get us a handful of whoever don't be appointed?
Send the resumes to you.
Send, email them to me?
Email and and let everybody get their resumes in so we can do this.
Right.
What we need to, we need to move on this Monday.
And there is three positions now, Mr. Manager? There's three positions, not two.
You didn't do more.
Well, in January, there was, the commission would have to appoint someone and.
We got Rip on him, right?
Andy Wall just sent me a text and he wants to come off the region and he wants to come off the local.
Oh, there would be three.
So that's the third position, yes.
Is that a, that's Karen's position, Andy is.
Andy is, Andy Wall, Cassie Clemmons, and then uh.
So now you got three.
Yeah.
So they're three.
So what about Tawana Harris?
No, ac- actually just two, because I'm on there and Mr. Wall is still on there.
Alright, so she's.
So we two.
Tawana Harris is still on there?
She she's requested to be back on there.
Okay, so what, so how many do we actually got to fill? Two?
Two, yeah, two.
And both of them local board or the regional board and the local? Either.
They they, when the board is picked, then the board picks who goes to region.
Okay, I got you.
So Andy Wall will resign his position and he will be rea- that position will be reappointed the first meeting in January?
Yes, he'll resign. Well, that's Andy, Cassie, and then me.
Well, you're.
You're already had, you're already had two of you. You got three of you.
You have to be reappointed in January though.
Mr. Commissioner, if I may, so technically it is three board positions plus the ex officio, which is Timmy. There will be three open. I think when um Commissioner Lucas is saying two, what he's meaning is continuing Ms. um Tawana. And so then there would be two remaining if you keep her, but technically there are three total open board uh appointments that you'll have to make in January plus the ex officio, which is four total.
And I'll give back to one of y'all if y'all want them.
No, we're gonna keep you.
How long you gonna keep you?
Tell me, we don't want to deprive you of that golden opportunity.
We've already voted. You're going back. You've already been elected.
Okay, now, we got that clear on the library. Everybody knows what they know, right?
So we got three people we need to.
We got three people to appoint.
Okay, so we can submit the names and then we.
If he resigns. Well, no, Tawana, Tawana's already sent her letter.
If she resigns, but she's, she won't.
She won't, she's already sent her letter.
She wants to stay on.
She stay on it, so we just reappoint her, but then we got two more new ones to go. Okay, two more. We need them uh resumes and their names and whoever's going.
Alright.
Okay, any more? Any more commission? Okay, any more? Any more commission?
Turn it three. So we got.
You got anything?
But I forgot.